Let's call this meeting in order to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will, I'm sure.
Introduction.
Welcome.
All right, everybody, everybody knows who everybody is in the room? Okay, we're good.
I'm not sure about the two in the back. I've seen you on camera before, but...
Hi, I'm Monica Cravitt.
Hi, I'm Monica Cravitt.
How you doing? Good.
Okay, any addition or deletion?
Yes, there are two additions to the agenda this evening. Under older unfinished business, the town roof repair. Jessica had some updated information on that. And there was an email that was forwarded to the board from the Vermont Challenge Group regarding the Vermont Challenge. It's a bike event that comes through town and they are curious for the town's input and support for parking options potentially. So there was an email that was sent to you that I had let them know that we could discuss this evening and be in touch. So I thought we could put that under new business.
Oh, and Kristen, I had sent an email, but I don't know if you got it. I was hoping under old business, we could touch on the ARPA funds again.
Yes.
And also, the 2022 municipal planning grants are out now. I mean, the process for those is available. So I don't know if that would go on. I'd like to discuss what we might try to apply for. I don't know if that goes under new or old.
How about old? If it makes sense for Mike, how about old for the ARPA funds? And then new for the municipal planning grants?
Okay, that sounds... And that's good for...
Yeah, and then one other item. So there's still the unique, some unique elements of tonight's meeting. There is the public hearing again that we'll be going through quickly and that's set to be in a moment or so. And then there's also a continued discussion of Mr. Surjane's wastewater request that he came to the board with last meeting. So if you're prepared to continue to talk about that tonight, we can keep that. If not, we can delete that.
Okay, so next step is the public hearing then, huh?
I think next step is the public hearing.
Public hearing. Okay, so the public hearing had to be done again because we failed to...
Well, we didn't fail.
We didn't fail, the paper failed us.
The late Free Press failed to print our ad on time.
Correct. So in order for everybody to be happy at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, we had to re-warrant it, post it in the paper and make sure that they had it posted within the timeframe, which they did this time.
Yep.
And we just need to vote on it one more time. It was all brought up before. It's been posted, all the changes that are made to the plan. Does anybody have any questions to any of the changes?
I think that Jessica could briefly go through the bullet points and have it cover any questions and Q and As.
Sure, Frank, I could go over it again.
But if nobody has any questions, there's really no reason for her to go over it again because we've already gone over it once. So does anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, then, let's have a vote on that. Does somebody want to make a motion that we approve these?
Yeah, I move that we approve the bylaw changes.
The bylaw changes, okay.
I'll second that.
Second that motion. Is there any more discussion regarding the second vote and the bylaw changes for the Planning Commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Opposed? Carried. Excellent, thank you.
Three years coming.
Yeah.
Okay, approval of minutes from previous meeting. Did anybody have any questions or comments or anything that they... Excellent job then. All right, well, for John, John's usually, he always picks out the ones that I redo with, so... Perfect. Do you have a motion for a minute?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Right?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Pre-recreted?
None this evening.
None this evening. Any announcements?
No, nothing for me. I don't know if anybody else has anything to announce, but nothing for my desk.
Reports. Zoning Administrator's report. Would you mind?
Certainly.
Well, if he didn't really have a report, he just posted a...
So there was an email Jonas sent through an email. I forwarded it to you all a little bit later this afternoon, so sorry if you didn't see it already. The email reads, "Hello, Board Members. I have a Planning Commission meeting tonight at 7:00 PM in Castleton and another PC meeting on July 27th. I have a DRB meeting on Tuesday, July 20th as well. Busy summer. Since my last report, we have had two new zoning permits for the month of June. That brings the total to 10 permits in June and one in July. Thank you, Jonas."
Okay.
There's also a copy of permits that are available and those can be requested through the Zoning Administrator's office. Also, they are posted in the usual locations. So if anybody has questions about those...
The usual location is?
They are online, I believe, or they're, usually they're all posted. They've always been posted on the bulletin boards and they're usually then all posted, I think at this point in time, on the exterior of the town hall. So you're welcome.
Any questions about zoning administrator? Martin?
I was just wondering if you could kind of take us through the salient points of the changes to the zoning regulations in town? Just as an overview.
That, what, that we just voted on?
Yeah.
Well, we did, we had one, there was wording on the...
Do you want me to go over it just briefly?
Just to high points, please.
Sure, yeah, it was very small. It was an update to the definition of, we added a definition for a commercial school. We made a few changes that were mandated by law to multifamily dwellings and to, what are they? BUDs? Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, that were mandated by state law that has happened in the last four years since we updated the bylaws.
What is a commercial school?
Let me pull it up. Well, we have defined it in our bylaws. So I can pull those up just a second and get you the definition. Because as it turns out, schools which are licensed by the state cannot be regulated via the town zoning. So, like the Meadowwee School, we can't regulate it via zoning. It's, except for things like setbacks.
The school is not a commercial school, that's municipal school.
Right, yeah, so not everybody on the Planning Commission knew that town zoning didn't apply to municipal schools. That was just something that we...
So this would be like private daycare?
Yeah, this would be like a karate school, a dance school. Not really a daycare because I think that's covered elsewhere. Let me pull up our definition for that one second.
Can I say something? Are you looking?
I mean, ask Mike.
Wait until she's done, please.
I'm sorry, it's taken a moment for the document to open.
We don't need to get two conversations going at once, so...
Yeah, gotcha.
All right, I've got the document open. I'm just scrolling down to the bottom where the definitions are. "School, commercial. Any type of instructional building area of property or function on a property in any zone within the Town of Pollet that is not certified by the Department of Education where the operation is a private, commercial, licensed or otherwise registered business within the state of Vermont."
Okay, so basically a money-making business.
Yep.
So my next question is, what were the changes to multifamily housing? How does that apply to Pollet?
One second. It had to do with loosening the restrictions for what people can appeal about, basically. All right, multifamily dwelling under conditional uses, section four. There were already three conditions for it. The fourth condition was added. "A multifamily dwelling consisting of four or fewer units located in a district allowing multifamily dwellings may not be denied solely due to an undue adverse effect on the character of the area affected." And that was language that was required by new state statutes that have been passed in the last several years. So basically amounts to, if someone wants to appeal the zoning of a multifamily dwelling, they can't appeal it solely on an adverse effect on the character of the area. They have to appeal it based on something else.
Okay, that's kind of nebulous term, adverse effect on the character.
Yeah, my...
It's a totally subjective thing.
Many zoning regulations are, and it's been up to the zoning administrator and then the DRB to determine the language. Again, I didn't decide on this language. This is language that was mandated by the state.
I get what you're saying, but you understand that you're on very squishy ground here about what's adverse.
Yeah, and it's saying that we can't use adverse effect because we don't want to be that squishy. That's what this is saying. Because what basically, what I think the state wants to do here is someone's like, "Oh, I don't want a multifamily dwelling to be near me because there's going to be a lot of people. It will have an adverse effect on the character of the land." And then, and then so someone will try to deny a multifamily dwelling just on it being a multifamily dwelling. And I think the state doesn't want people to do that. That's my impression.
Okay, any more questions, Marty, or...
I'm just used to dealing with the zoning laws that are...
Well, maybe it'll be better if you, did you have a chance to look them over?
I looked them over briefly and that's why I've got the question. I'm just, it seems, number one, that not just this municipality, but all municipalities are asking, are being asked to defer to state power on something that is really a local matter. Zoning is a local matter. It's traditionally not a state matter. And it's usually much more tightly defined. So I guess my real question is, does this deserve any kind of pushback from municipalities in terms of what we have a right to determine versus what Montpelier decides that they have a right to determine? And in most of the other states I've worked in, zoning has been defined at an extremely local level, meaning the town, the city, not the state. And it kind of leads me to something, something else that I had heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the state had been considering that they could override private covenants in deeds if they deemed zoning to allow, say, the development of a piece of property that someone sold with a deed restriction on it, but that property was allowed to be developed, even though the deed restriction said it couldn't be developed. The state is saying, no, municipality or the state can override that and supersede the deed restriction. And that has some very profound implications for property rights and property values.
John has a comment?
Mr. Chair, I've got a point of order. This issue has been warned and this is the second time we've done it. During this hearing, the chair asked for discussion twice, maybe three times, and we have proceeded on the agenda. I think Mr. Cravitt has had plenty of time to discuss this this evening.
Okay.
So I take that to mean you don't want to respond to it?
Well, don't, like we said...
I think that you haven't prepared to see the, to come to the Planning Commission hearing on this. You didn't come to the first hearing we had, which turned out to be not allowed. And we proceeded through our agenda beyond this after a vote was taken and passed, after you had an opportunity to ask questions, to discuss the matter twice, maybe three times. And still you come back and take over this meeting for your own reasons.
And those, any questions?
So, Martin, the questions that you're answering right now are no longer relevant because we have passed this and we don't have the answers for those questions because the last question that you had was something that you said you heard come down from the state. And the regard, your opinion on how the state has trying to take over, I believe that they're just trying to close the loophole that said any undue effect, adverse effect. They want it spelled, they're basically forcing our hand to make it more clear than an adverse effect. So really, they, they're forcing our hand to make a clear...
I hear what you're saying, but I guess my question is, why, why are they forcing anyone?
Well, we don't know, well, but two points. One, we don't have that question right now. And the other point is that we're in a different part of discussion now. That these, those questions need to come to the Planning Commission to work back up through the system at this point.
So what you're saying is it's over and done with? There's no point discussing it?
Those motions that we have, we have approved are over and done with. Yes.
Fine.
Frank?
The changes were just to clean up some loose ends and do what the state wanted to do. One to 10 acre zoning, this is a bunch of things. And it's just, really just a cleanup job. Now with Planning Commission, which should come to a meeting because those types of issues and questions the public can bring up, the Planning Commission meeting because we're going to go into a next round of unified bylaw revision, including the development of the energy plant, which the Planning Commission has agreed to. It needs priority right now. So the fourth Monday, right here, and we can talk about that and find out the answers because there's nothing they're going to do because as it goes to Planning Commission first. This isn't the body really right here because they've already gone through the hearing process. But we can address those issues, public issues, at the Planning Commission meeting as we progress through the next round. That's the way to do it, I think.
So there is a next round?
Well, we're always looking at changing things around accordingly.
Yes.
So that's it.
It's a continual process, is the best way to say it.
Yeah.
So there's always, there's always work to improve everything as we go along. So these are, these went through the system and then now they're started again and they work them out through the system.
May I ask, is this the statute 24 that you're talking about that the state passed for January 2021 about covenants, restrictions and so forth, referring to affordable housing? Is this the statute 24?
For you? It's a state-level problem.
That one has not reached the Planning Commission yet.
Oh, it hasn't reached?
No.
Okay.
No, the things that we're dealing with were at least two or three years old.
I see.
Yeah, so we haven't dealt with anything past this year yet.
Are you planning to take that up or...
I mean, it wasn't on our list, but we could look at it.
I'm a big pro.
We are onto the Planning Commission's report.
Right.
We are still in the report section of our meeting this evening. And I think that's all very valuable points everybody's bringing up, but it's my job to keep us on task. So we're getting off task and let's redirect the ship.
There is no Planning Commission report as we will be meeting on the fourth Monday. So we have not met since the last select board meeting.
Okay, Keith?
I don't have a lot either. I'm going on the Eric Road. We'll be done with the rock this week. Gravel next week. I guess it was a little unrealistic to expect I was going to get paving bids on already short for the July week.
Okay.
That'll be the next meeting and I'll probably get some winter sand prices for you also at the same time. Start, time to start thinking about that, so. That's about all I have.
Okay. So you're going to get prices on, on A-stone?
Yeah. Keeping in mind that the fuel costs are going to cripple us. The fuel costs are going to be crippling on that. That's the hauling from Velucia is serious, so, you know, it's...
I think that the other material that we've been using on the road is very detrimental. So I think that the fuel costs are going to be well, well, money better well spent than putting that other poison on the road as far as I'm concerned, so...
Are you talking about what we've been buying from what?
All the sand that we've been putting on the road for many, many years has created a bad...
I think the sand that we're using now is much better stuff.
Mixing it, mixing it with what's already on the roads here, I'm just disappointed with it. So, and it makes an awful lot of dust in the summer. So I don't see where we get any benefit from trying to go cheap. Martin?
I noticed on my road, Rupert Mountain Road, there had been some damage to either a bridge or a culvert. I'm not sure what it is, but it was taken care of. I guess Keith, you took care of it and filled it in and it seemed to do the job. However, I've noticed that it's starting to bleed out again under the guardrail and it may need to be looked at again. Maybe something needs to be done to retain the fill that's being put down there. What, Keith, what is it? Is it a culvert or is it a bridge?
It's a box culvert, yeah.
It's a box?
Or concrete.
Yeah.
What's happening? Is it collapsing somewhere?
No, it's on the edge. The road is too wide for the structure. Basically, it's on the shoulder, just rolling away.
Is there any easy fix for this?
Yeah, we'll build a wall or something. Get a big enough nugget in there to hold the materials. It's not pushing the concrete.
But it was good. You seemed to have gotten into it quickly.
All right, so Eric Brook Road will be gravelled next week, so will it be one week of graveling or a couple of weeks or...
I think probably a week. Hopefully not any more than that, yeah. By the end of next week, should be in very good shape on that project, so. And I contacted them for the slippers, but I haven't heard of confirmed the fill orders. So I'll pass it on to all of anybody that wants to attend when they come down and check if they've got them. I don't have that time to be there.
One thing I did notice when I came through town is they tracked a lot into the main road from the pit there, so...
Probably, I have not been on that side of the project, so. They've had enough rain the past couple of days. That could be a possibility, yeah.
Understandable, but if we could do something to kind of, it's pretty loose here. I'm sure that a bicyclist or something like that would not like it very well. Anybody else have any questions for Keith?
I did have someone ask me about culvert on the North Pollet Road. I guess it's getting pretty rough. So I didn't get a chance to...
Crossing? I mean, we've patched it up a couple of times, but I haven't been near that in a while. I guess the last time I talked was Richard about it. Maybe I had a flat tire or something down the way.
And that was a totally separate pothole. And at some point the next week or so, I'm going to meet with Keith down on that new street and figure out what we need for the water issue, so. Project there, get the stuff ordered.
Anybody else? And that's, and that's when you talk to the new street project, are you going to talk to Bruce too about?
It'll be all in...
Everything will all, will all happen at the same one swoop? Okay. Anything else for Keith? Okay.
I have a question. Where do you get prices? Where do you plan to get prices for the sand and the 1As?
Martel and Chet will, that's who we've usually dealt with. I guess last year we just bought it from Martel because he gave us the same price as the year before and we were happy with the product. So we rebid it last year against them.
Can Chet make the 1As out of that fractured ledge?
Probably, I don't know, not without asking him, no. Potentially, but it may not be something he wants to separate out.
It's a nice closed source.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Is there a report from the assessors?
No report.
Nothing reported.
They did held their grievance hearing yesterday and apparently it went smoothly. I haven't heard the outcome.
I didn't hear any, anything other than an email we all got that everything left?
Yes, and Lisa appreciated your help with the issue.
We got Bill there too because he didn't know, so...
Right.
She didn't want to be there without him. That's the sad part.
Yeah.
Very sad.
Mm-hmm.
So... Okay, town clerk's memo? Do you mind reading it?
Certainly. "From the town clerk's office for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, Vinnie Covino has begun to prep us for the new computer in the town clerk's office. New backup batteries were installed today in three offices. He will be taking my computer back to his office to make the upgrades on it before installing. Things are quiet in the office with research having slowed down a bit. I will be reporting the final numbers on the CTC-L grant we received for COVID and election expenses. We were able to utilize the full amount of $5,000. Have a great evening, Deb."
Any questions? Okay. Town trashers' report.
Hi.
Hi, Julie.
Now my stuff, I didn't grab my memo.
Oh, I did.
Oh, we have, we have one to share.
Thank you. Two warrants this week, and as promised last time, I said I would report the final warrant numbers because we were up in air on a couple of bills. So the final numbers were the payroll was $9,274.46, accounts payable was $34,733.49, general fund monies was $23,757.70, highway was $15,223.73, and wastewater was $5,026.52. That was the last meeting. So for this meeting, the payroll warrant is $9,012.86, accounts payable is $27,484 even. I was very excited to go ahead and remember. It's so rare. General fund monies, $18,787.9, highway was $16,769.71, wastewater was $904.6. I sent the initial paperwork to the auditor last week, last Wednesday, and he's out of his office for the rest of this week, but when he comes back, we're gonna be setting a date for him to come down to continue the process here at the town hall. And then the only other questions I have after the warrant are the status on Schindler. They did not include that bill in this warrant. And then I'm ready to do what I'm calling a practice run on the tax rate, which just basically is to like keep you updated. The status after the hearing for grievances on Monday was that they would have final numbers for me as an as-bill grant list this coming Monday, the 19th, and then I will have a grant list number that I would be able to use to really calculate the tax rate, but we have a pretty solid estimate of where we're at right now. And I think I did leave one of those sheets, but the estimated general fund tax rate would be .2652, which is up from .2531 last year. Highway is .3086, which is up from .2989 last year. The local agreement has gone down slightly, and I did a little work. So on a $300,000 property, the change in the general fund rate would be $36 in their tax rate for the year, and with the highway would be 29, thereabouts. So you guys don't need to vote on that tax rate. We will vote on it at the next meeting. But if you have any questions on it, just let me know before the next meeting.
Mike, I can address the Schindler if this is a good time?
Yes.
You got the email and from Merrill?
I don't think.
I copied you on my email.
On yours, but I don't think I got her response.
She just sent it to anyway for the rest of the board. We inquired of Merrill whether the auto renewal on the elevator contract bound us, and she says there's, isn't any way other than hard negotiation, could you get out of it? She, or she advised trying to get out of the new contract, and neither of which looked promising. So I, I don't recommend that the board do any. I think we're stuck with it, and I think we should move to pay the.
Issue in there?
The present or current bill. So we'll have great coverage.
We'll get them both to come over. Get it done twice a year. So Julie?
I just think it needs to be put in my calendar to, or even if you can't do anything right now with Schindler, it's worth letting them know right now that we are not renewing the contract so that we don't have this happen to us again.
Well, we'll have to do it. The contract says 90 days prior either party.
Okay, so if we put that in the calendar to do before.
I don't know who does. Can you do that in your calendar or?
I mean.
How long is it run for?
One more year after this year.
One more year after this year? And when is it up?
2023.
I mean, the, what's the window of when we can?
90 days.
I forget what the date of the invoice.
I put the contract in your box. Okay. So I'm gonna look for that.
Clarification. It can be canceled 90 days only? 90, not 91, 90, or 89? That's the way it reads. That's the way it reads.
Minimum.
Or within the 90-day, within 90-day window.
Within that 90-day. I'm sorry. Either party prior to the expiration. Within the 90-day window prior to expiration. Understood. Thank you.
You no longer want to be on Schindler's list.
So the practice run on the tax rate you already did.
We just need a motion on the warrants.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants.
I'll second that.
Second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is it, do we need to make, are there any special verbiage to include Schindler?
No.
Okay.
I got the gist of it, so it'll be on the next warrant. We'll need a motion then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's all approved then, okay. And were, any more questions for Julie? Guess so? We're good. Thank you.
Julie, can I have that memo?
Emergency management.
Yes.
Anything from Bob?
Might be easier to pull it up on here. Oh, wow, thank you. Okay, so from the emergency management director for the month of June 2021, a COVID-19 vaccine clinic was held in Pollet on June 11th at the Pollet Volunteer Fire Department Firehouse from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We had 19 people receive the J&amp;J vaccine. The Rutland Free Clinic sponsored the event and reported that this was the most successful clinic that they have had to date. Thanks to Jackie Becker for organizing the event and to the Pollet Volunteer Fire Department for use of the building. With the cancellation of the health emergency, with the cancellation of the health emergency by Governor Scott, Pollet Emergency Management has discontinued the daily COVID update. You may continue to follow any updates by going to the Vermont Department of Health website. Submitted by Bob Morleano.
Any questions or comments? All good. Health director, uh, health officer?
So we've received our first report from our new health officer, Jennifer Sullivan, and there was a completed rental housing code inspection at a multifamily dwelling on Route 149, which was done with Bob. I've also just reached out to Marielle Strong, who I had been in communications with, with submitting all the paperwork, just to confirm that Jennifer was listed and that we could update that information on the town website. So she's out of the office, but I'm going to be working with Sean to get her information up there so that if anybody has any questions or comments for the health officer, they will be able to contact Jennifer.
Good, thank you. And anything else? Wastewater, cool. I don't, do you want to read that one out loud too, please?
Sure. Here are the Pollet wastewater treatment facility DMR submission files for June 2021 and the Vermont Utility Management Services updates at the end since June 1st. Bill Norris, PE from Engineering Ventures finally got back to us on 7/7/21 with bad news. The tank walls cannot withstand doing the upgrade, so we are on to Plan B with Jenny Oster. I will be placing the front tanks back into service to see how the plant works with, works on both trains. Future priorities, the RFQ from Jenny Oster will be sent over in the next few weeks with a proposed scope and fee, with recommendation to apply for RD program in December of 2021 for the bond vote in March of 2022. These projects will happen in FYE 2022, beginning soon and wrapping up before the cold weather comes. Schedule replacement of air valve near end of Force Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station. Schedule Spruce Gum Pump Station repair and replace pump one. Schedule jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. And as always, please let me know if you have any questions. Submitted by Jill. I think that's it. There's an attachment, a couple of attachments, but that.
Those are the reports.
Those are the reports. So that concludes the report from the wastewater treatment facility.
Any questions or comments? Older unfinished business. Mr. Sir Jane's request. So what does everybody think about Mr. Sir Jane's request?
I missed the last meeting.
Okay. So he's requesting that we abate the sewer user fee on that little building that he owns next to the Fish and Game due to the fact that it has no sewer hookup even and there's no pipe to the street or anything like that.
And no running water.
Right. So according to the ordinances, it doesn't call out whether it has running water or not.
So why would he be getting charged if it doesn't have a hookup?
No, that's because of the way the, the ordinance was written.
So whether you have a hookup or not.
If you have a building.
Within the village limits or within the wastewater system?
Mr.
I think this was the one I'm looking at.
Every, I think, I believe every building in town in that section area was supposed to have a connection. Whether they choose, chose to use it or not, they would have to pay for it. Unfortunately, the way that played out where that building's located, it was anticipated that it would use the connection from the, should it need a sewer system, it would be able to use the one from the Fish and Game building. So technically, that one does not have its own tee out in the street to become liable for a. Is there other buildings, is there other buildings in town that don't have a hookup that are being charged? There's other, I think there's other pieces of property, I believe, that may not have a building on them that they, there was a, a street tee installed. So should they remove the building, they still have to pay for the hookup because they have that capability. So the lot still has to pay for that hookup?
Okay, so Section 404 says, "The owner of any house, building, or properties used for human occupancy, employment, recreation, or other purposes situated within the town in a budding on any street, alley, or right-of-way in which there is now located or may in the future be located a public sanitary or combined sewer of the town is hereby required at his expense to install suitable toilet facilities therein and to connect such facilities directly with the proper public sewer in ordinance, ordinance within the provisions of this ordinance, in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance within 90 days after date of official notice to do so, provided that said sewer is within the 150 feet of the structure to be served unless undue hardship would result, in which case the property owner should request in writing a deferral of this requirement."
Mike?
Keith?
The other point Bruce was trying to emphasize was that he owns the Fish and Game building and then bought this little building. So this little building is now an accessory building to his Fish and Game building. It's not a separate lot. It's all-inclusive.
Like having a garage.
So I think the point he's trying to impress is you'll pay one hookup fee on the property, but the property is contiguous now and the little building is more of an accessory to the main building.
Was that a separate?
It was, it was a separate building prior, yes.
They were separate when the sewer was installed. They were two separate parcels.
What's the little building used for?
Has it been, the last thing it was used for was back in the mid-'80s. A guy had a saw sharpening shop in there.
Because I, what you just read had a list of things, reasons for using the building that you would have to hook up the sewer.
He had a saw sharpening shop, but he never had any water or anything like that, but he always paid the sewer fee.
Someone has had, it's been like a sewing studio and things.
Yeah, it was an art thing.
Yeah, an arts space.
Early.
Have the lots actually been combined? Because that's a, that's a thing you need to do, you know?
They would legally have to be combined in order to call it an accessory structure. And if he, and if he chose to open that as a private entity, would we be required to So these are some questions I guess we gotta ask Mr. Sir Jane, if, if he wants to, if he wants to apply as that, as a accessory building, if he, if he can join the two lots, then he could call it an accessory building since it was not used for public and had no
Yeah, you'd have to make it all one lot for that to work.
And I guess he never really actually requested anything in writing either, did he? He came to the meeting, but he didn't supply us with anything in writing.
I think it's quicker on my phone here. I think the request was in writing to a degree, but let's see.
Not.
So is there any other lots that have two hookups on them? They're one lot with two hookups? Or do they just get charged for one?
Anybody with an apartment?
Even if it's the same lot, they get charged for two hookups? Right.
But then.
West Pollet School used to be like three hookups at one time. Larry Leslie's was seven or eight hookups based on number of employees and certain things like that. So there's a formula that goes in.
Regardless.
So that, that will come up too. But any place there's an apartment over there, there's a main hookup for the house, and then if you have two apartments, you pay for three hookups.
Right.
Your main residence in the two apartments.
Like Erickson's place there, that had two apartments. Like Erickson's place there, that had two apartments in the back, but then when Gashell bought it, they, they discontinued those two apartments and then they were reduced to just one hookup from three. Kristen?
I have the, the original request, if you'd like to hear it. So the request is for the wastewater tax on the small shop building in West Pollet to be forgiven slash removed until we connect to it, should we choose to. Our reasoning is it technically does not have its own access or connection to the main sewer line within that building, nor is there any deeded right to do so through the building next door, given we own that building as well as we would not object. Again, should we choose to connect to sewer in that building, we will pay the tax from that point on. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so he did ask for it in writing, but we would, the one thing that we would have to do is we would have to, we would have, he would have to prove to us that that's a, that that lot has been connected, so that then that could be in, in turn, an accessory building. It's probably about the only way. But if it stays a separate lot, according to this, it has to have, it has to have, you, you pay whether you use it or not. Now, does anybody actually know whether there's a tee buried in the street or not?
I don't know that. I know there's nothing in the basement of the building, other than the sleeve across the alley.
They could have put a tee in and if you didn't bust out to it, it was your responsibility to go out to it. So if they didn't...
I don't believe it shows on the prints, Mike.
Right.
I mean, it might be there somewhere, but I don't think it shows anything on the prints. We looked one other time when Katrina or...
Right, the last people had it. When you looked at the print, at the Asdran prints and it, they didn't show that they put a...
Didn't show a tee in the street, but you also have a major manhole right in front of it too.
So it would be...
You could go in...
Yeah, could effectively just put a, put your pipe right into that manhole casing very easily without having to put a, any tee in.
So it's, yeah, it's variable. It's, it's a tough call because you don't want to give up hookup fees.
Right. So what does the board want to do about this one?
I think we need to find out if he's combined the two lots or if he plans to combine the two lots and, and talk with him and see what his plans are.
Yeah. Because that's, I mean, from what we've just discussed, that sounds like the only logical way that we could, that we could relinquish him from a sewer fee is if those two lots were conjoined and that was called an accessory dwelling. Other than that, if it's a...
Because even bare lots get charged the fee.
Well, no, I, no, because even though the tees are there, like, what you call it?
Like Ray Duquette pays his sewer fee on that little building.
Right, but he has a building there.
Right, but I'm saying he's not connected and stuff, so...
Right, he doesn't use it or anything like that, but like, oh, Cindy Legg took down that house with two...
Right.
With two, two apartments in it, but she only, now she only pays for the one for her house.
But it's one piece of property. Bill Joneses, Bill Joneses, they got rid of all the apartments. We witnessed that it was sealed off and that there's just one house, a single family dwelling, and so they went back to one, one sewer fee.
I don't know. I don't even know if there's 120 now or something.
I think we're 120.
Yeah, I think it's in the mid 120s.
It could be 132 or 150.
I think we're probably, I know we're in the low twenties, if anything. I think we've lost close to 10 probably because Ray Joneses had three or four and Erickson's and those, but I don't know if, the only, I don't know that there's any lot that doesn't have a dwelling on it that has a hookup besides the lot that the town owns right now.
No, the only one that's not paying the tax is the one just towards the village, the trailer and the house. I don't know who owns it.
Right.
You know, who, you know, who puts one of them. They're not on the wastewater.
No, because they don't have the option.
Well, they, they have 10 acres, so they're on-site sewage and only thing that goes in front of their house is a force main. There's no, no way to get them back across the quarries to the spruce gum pump station and you would in effect have to put a special pump there for them to get up to it.
Pump up. So I think that...
But everything else, even if it's a vacant lot, is charged a hookup fee.
Okay, so a vacant lot does still get a hookup fee?
What?
Because of the potential.
He said everything that's not a vacant lot?
If, if there's a vacant lot that has a sewer hookup, does it get charged?
Everything that has a hookup gets charged whether they use it or not.
Okay.
It's in your ordinance.
Does it have to be a building on it? Or could, if it was a vacant lot with a hookup, how does that?
I don't think that there are any vacant lots that have hookups.
Right, the only one is the one that the town owns at this point. That's the only vacant lot with a sewer.
What about the old Oddfellows place on across from Patsy Treehouse? That's a vacant lot. Is that, is your hookup fee goes with that? Hookup goes with it? Nothing there?
I, I think the Oddfellows Hall was taken down before the sewer went in.
Isn't it conjoined with one of the pieces of property, Tim Joseph's?
Yeah, yeah. I think Patsy owned it actually.
But... Right, she owns the crossroads. But I don't, I, it seems to me like that building went down before. Do you remember Frank? That building go down before the sewer went through?
Yeah, it must have gone down before the sewer went through because I, I think you're right.
Yeah. So as, as far as we know, there's no, there's no vacant lots with a sewer, with a sewer hookup, so it appears that the only way that he can, you, not have to be responsible for the taxes if that's all one lot. So we need to send him...
Because having a sewer capability adds value.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
The only other thing that I will remind you is that every user you lose is at least $8 to everybody else. And there have been multiple people that have requested not being on because their building doesn't have sewer. And if you let this one go, then that's what goes.
Right, but that's why we feel that if, if it's an accessory building...
There's another person that purchased some of the property that was being removed. I'm just...
There's, there's, there's buildings that have that accessory dwellings that could, okay.
This is going to snowball. That's all my opinion.
Right. Frank?
Julie thinks a good point on the precedence thing, which is spills out into everything. The old Dooford place, two doors up on the left in the front, on 153, for a two bird. That was a two-unit. And it had two sewer fees going to it. Previous owners, two before, removed the second unit and made it one house. And so they went back to paying one instead of two. And when we were, the planning commission, who was walking in, Eric commented that they'd gone back to one and if they go for a year as a single unit there, that they give up their two-unit grandfather that was in existence. And they don't have enough acreage there to break that out into two units, which it could be. And that's part of the review the planning commission will be doing after the energy stuff on the multi-units in the village centers of allowing expansion, sensible expansion, maybe involving the DRB unconditional use, to enable people to make more multi-unit available in the sewage district area to encourage potentially investment in it and, and, because it costs a lot to put mount systems in and it's just, so the fee gets added.
So we're, we're running, okay, I understand your point, but we're running a little bit off topic.
But it's going to be discussed in the planning commission.
So at this point, I guess we really need to bring Mr. Sir Jane back so that we can explain to him what we've discussed and...
Yeah, and the only other thing too, that I just have to offer, just through, the board has been through this same request for the same building before, which was a different situation due to the other request was not made by somebody who owned the adjacent building, but it could be of benefit to look back on that. I, because I believe it went to the Board of Abatement of Taxes.
Yes.
Is who ended up making that determination. So it could be of benefit to go back and look at the decision made there and why that ultimately was made, just before you have Bruce come back too.
Probably because they weren't going to make it one lot, would be my assumption.
Well, my recollection was that it was because it's, it was a building that had a hookup and whether or not they were using it, the way that it all shakes out in terms of the, the rulebook was just that, kind of like what Julie was saying, it's just, this is just the way that it goes. But I think it's a unique element that they now own the next building and whatever their plans might be with that. So just a tool that maybe would be of benefit, but Bruce did say that he would look forward to hearing from me on behalf of everybody based after what you discussed tonight, and I'm sure he would not be opposed to coming back to provide a little bit more.
Do you know what year that was when the Board of Abatement looked at that?
It was probably...
Because I know we can go back and look at the minutes.
I'd say it was probably 2019. It was warmer weather and it was before COVID. So, that's all I got for you.
It was a cloudy day.
The person that used to own the building is a seamstress and I remember what she was wearing when she came in. She looked really, she had made something cute, so I could tell you that, but I don't know when it was. But I can help look into that.
Yeah.
You could.
Thanks.
So anyway, so would you, would you like for me to make any communications with Bruce?
I think it would probably be good if we had him come back to the next meeting. It, it looks like we would have to make an ordinance anyways, or...
Or flip, utilize the ordinance.
We'd have to, we'd have to write something to put into the sewer plan that, that spelled that out, why he could be...
Yeah.
That's it, you could make a change.
Well, I will, I will write him a message asking if he can plan to come to the next meeting and/or provide a little bit more information on what's going on over there.
Because clearly, clearly from what we have in front of us, he, there's, he has to come up with a reason, more, more, more so than, because it could be hooked up to the sewer. That would be our responsibility. If he chose to stick a pipe out, we would have to be, make some way to accept it, whether we had to go all the way down to sewer pipe and, and have a tee installed or what. We, it would, it's our responsibility to accept the sewer from that building. So, does anybody else have any more comments or?
I just wonder whether, who will do the research?
About the...
About what we did with the Pharaoh, Katrina?
I can look into, I might be able to find it online, the minutes. If you and I, we can, if you happen to get to it before I do, maybe let me know and vice versa. But I, I have it on my list.
Okay.
So...
Because if it was an abatement hearing...
You would, isn't that, aren't those minutes posted on the website in the archives?
I don't know. It was before we had our own.
It was an abatement hearing, I remember that.
It was, I remember that. It was, it was right before a select board meeting because I happened to be here for the tail end of the abatement meeting before. So if you have those minutes or...
I might.
I know, I didn't make it.
Deb should have them somewhere too.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've, I think we've done all we can do with that for this, this time.
So the next item for older unfinished business is the slate roof proposal, which, ah, yes, from our friend Rudd. So Bob and I met with, um, met with Dave Armstrong. There are three generations of Dave. Dave the older, Dave the middle, and Dave the younger. That's not what they call themselves.
They call themselves Rudd Builders.
Yes, they call themselves Rudd Builders with a Z. They have sent us a proposal for fixing the roof here, and I forwarded that to everybody on the select board. What it says is, "Scope, remove any broken or missing slates on the entire building and replace with vintage slate to match the existing. All repairs will be done with slate hooks or bib and fasten method per SRCA guidelines. We estimate two days for repairs at 2,400 per day." He told us about how he doesn't charge by the equipment used or by the pieces used, they just charge by the day because they find that simplest and most fair. He says, "If it takes less time, we will adjust the price on the final invoice. This includes all labor and materials to complete the scope. Any minor woodwork will also be included in this proposal. However, if there's any extensive damage structural, this would be on a time and material basis." So the total, he estimates, two days would be 4,800. And it did seem, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like his outfit has the scope to do this. He's got like a 60-foot ladder, he's got everything that he needs to get up there.
Right, and he said rather than being nitpicky and counting, counting the pieces of slate, it'd be respa, and it's all part of the, part of the process to change anything that's broken or needs, needs replacing and comb the, comb the entire roof. He may, he thought he would need access off the property behind, and worst case, they may just need to put the base of a ladder there, but otherwise, the intention was to go off the roof of the back porch here to access the, the backside of the building.
Oh, and he did say that if we decide to go ahead with, with his company, that they could probably fit it in fairly soon, because this would be the kind of job they do between other major jobs where they go down to New Jersey or New York or something.
Well, if it's, if they're working in New Jersey and it gets rained out, they come back for an early weekend and if they know it's going to get rained out in another location, because they do a lot of work in the cities, so...
And I do just want to remind everybody that with the rain we've gotten recently, it's continuing to drip up there. Sue was telling me about how it, how many buckets they've had to fill, so...
They've been at it for quite a few years now too, Anthony.
Yep.
And on especially good weather patterns, it even graces down here with its presence.
No.
He said his, his 60-foot ladder was quite a chore to, to upright, but it works great in the city because when they're working on one roof, the neighbor stops and wants to know if they can fix their roof and their roof. And he said they just keep the ladder upright and go right from one to the next, right down the street. They're very experienced roofers.
Do we have any, any other? We've contacted a few other people, haven't we done and with?
Well, we thought originally after Jeff Kelly had repaired a small patch in the library problem, but he isn't equipped for this job. We had thought that he might be able to utilize give max lift, but coming down that steep bank, I don't know if that's any place for...
The last time we had, when they painted it, remember? We had a big mess, they couldn't get the lift out and they wrecked Ray's lawn and everything.
Right.
And the only other person on the list that, that you gave me last time was Jim Duran, and we haven't contacted him, but...
He's just got two men working for him.
Yeah, I wrote here, two guys, two ladders, what I was told.
They just did a job for me and they were very reasonable and did okay so far. It's gotten through this rain spell.
But I'm thinking that a building of this size and stature needs somebody that's a little bit more equipped and I would, I would propose that we go with, with Dave and...
And he, he seemed very knowledgeable and ready to do it. So I think the fact that we could get it done soon and avoid any further damage to the roof upstairs would be...
Marty?
Was any inspection done of the valleys flashing or ridges?
They didn't go on the roof to inspect it. They will when they're up to...
So potentially...
There could be more to do when he gets out there and reviews it, but I mean, it was just from a ground.
So you might want to, if you go to contract with him, get some kind of understanding right up front about anything else being done on time and materials.
That's, it was spelled out in his contract. Yep, that he would talk with us about it, get it pre.
Oh, and he also forwarded us his insurance certificate, so we have that.
That, that could be examined by drone, you know? That, that could be examined by a drone, you know?
John, was Jim interested in giving a quote or he wasn't even interested?
I just gave the, did I give you the number?
Um.
I don't know if I gave you.
No, I don't, I don't.
I just gave you his name.
You just gave me his name.
One thing we've noticed in the past is that it's been pretty difficult to get somebody that wants to go up on this roof. We haven't had, we haven't had anybody that was really Johnny on the spot to want to come and climb this roof before and.
Sounds like this is the first, we've been talking about this for a while. This is the first.
Except for the church and steeple people that were like 25,000 to show up and.
Right. Oh, this, yeah. No, this is much more.
And then go from there.
And if they can fit in sooner, it might be nice to.
Yeah.
Get it done before it rolls inside.
And before the library does their coffee hours upstairs and with water dripping down. And there's been a lot of work going into making the, improving the upstairs.
Yeah, I heard about a lot of that from Sue and how it really needs to.
I'll make a motion that we make arrangements to, uh, work with Rudd builders to, uh, do some, some initial repairs on the roof. And if they do get into anything substantial, they'll report back to us and we'll go from there. But at least they'll get the broken slates replaced and, and hopefully save some of the water damage that's currently happening.
I'll second Bob's motion.
I will second that motion. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay. Excellent.
All right. I will get back with Dave then and tell him that we've decided to go with his proposal.
What's next?
Um, anything else under older unfinished business?
I think Jessica wanted to add.
Oh, did we have the? Those were the only two items that we officially had on the agenda for older unfinished business.
Can we talk about the sewer plant building? We want to, or is that going to go back? That was going to go under new business, Jessica.
What about the ARPA funds? I didn't, was that under old? You know, yeah.
It could just keep.
Wherever you'd like to put it. We'll talk about it.
Sure.
Um, ARPA.
Yes.
Yeah. So I've officially requested our ARPA funds. Um, we'll be getting the first installment of them sometime in the next few weeks. I thought it might be good for us to start considering how we're going to have a process for determining how to use these funds. Right? Because the, the seminars that I've been to talk about how it's very important with these funds to have a thoughtful process and not to rush into it about how we use them. And I'd like to get input from all of the stakeholders. So everybody who might have a stake in deciding how these funds are used. And my thought was that, and I don't know how soon we wanted to start this and how soon we might want to end up using the funds, but my thought was that if we had some, I don't know what you would call them, like sort of feedback sessions with folks from the town, you know, maybe with different people to hear from them what they, you know, we might make a list of sort of some of the options that they can, that this money can be used for and then just hear from folks what their thoughts are. I know that, um, the library had some ideas about what, you know, that they, they thought might be able to be used. And I'm sure that other folks in the town also have ideas.
Yeah, that would be good to compile some information. We, maybe we could put it out there that we could have almost like a suggestion box, so to speak.
Yeah. I was thinking that we possibly, I mean, I'd, I'd easily be able to put together like a little one page flyer or something, you know, to, about the funds and about what they can be used for. And I was thinking that maybe we could even send out, like do a survey to folks, you know, like what, what they thought would be the best use of these for the future of the town, right? You know, with, with a number, again, not like completely open, but with a number of different options.
I think we need to see what, what it can be used for.
Yeah. And then.
Which I've got.
I agree because I think that, I think what would be really important would be to ensure that people do their homework before because oftentimes there's so much that goes into this and folks will eagerly arrive. Like I would love to have sidewalks, you know, but that's probably not. I shouldn't come and say I'd love sidewalks in front of my house because this is not what those funds are for.
Yeah. That's why I think making a little document that was like, these are the things these can be used for, like wastewater.
Right. If we could tighten it down so that we're not getting all these suggestions all over, kind of have a little outline of which one of these particular options seemed to be most important.
It seemed like an idea in terms of structure of submitting that information or dispersing it rather, maybe the one page kind of info document. And we had great success putting something on front porch forum in the past. And if that was something, we could maybe distribute it through an email blast and put it out there and just say, this will be discussed at this select board meeting during older unfinished business. Please consider this topic and we encourage people to show up to talk about it.
Yeah. If you could work on, work on it like a one page thing to kind of narrow down the options, then we could look it all over and, and.
Sure. I'll put that together for next time.
That would be great.
And maybe prioritize like some bills with the wastewater treatment plant where we ran short, you know, to help bridge that gap. Cause a couple of meetings ago, Julie was saying we ran short on some funds. And I'm pretty sure you said that can be put towards that.
Yeah, we could, we could use it for, I'll have to find the exact language, but for upgrades or repairs or building new wastewater treatment plants.
So not existing bills?
I don't think existing bills, but for any like, for any repairs that we had to do with it.
But like, but like we could, maybe we could, we could say, we could put some of that money toward that pump replacement or something like that, instead of it coming out of the general.
Yeah. That would, that would absolutely be a legitimate.
So we can get, we can get, we can kind of get the template down and then we can work from the template to see how everything would fit in and then we can put it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
This could also just be.
What's the number? Do you know Jessica?
Um.
So much per capita, I know, but.
Yeah. Uh, we're around 143,000, but I'm, I don't have the exact number in front of me. I have it somewhere.
You have it?
I can probably find it. And half of it is coming this year and the other half next year.
Yeah, yeah. Two separate expenses.
Yep. I think it would be of benefit to as a board to focus on like, you know, some of the more important or more important quote, quote uses. And then it could just be, if you'd like, I could make it a standing topic for older unfinished business for the next couple of rounds of meetings. So for people that can't, you know, it can be an ongoing discussion about, because ideally we'll have this, these funds for a little while. So. And I'm, I'm hoping in, in, to hear from people, one, I hope that we can go back to having, um, an online option because I know a lot of folks who I saw during the Zoom meeting aren't here now. And I'm thinking about folks who have young kids who might want to be involved in discussing this. And I also would hope that there would be a way they could just, you know, like, like someone said a suggestion box, right? That they could just like, you know, drop their suggestion in the box outside town hall or something if they have a busy schedule and can't make it to our select board meeting. Cause I know people who might not be able to make it to the meeting might still have, you know, want to have their voice heard. My email inbox is always open too.
We can digital.
Right. We can get, if we can get a template that we can work on and then us as a board, we can kind of watch because, because we can kind of see some of these projects from a financial point. So we can help kind of steer which.
Yeah. A survey is actually not about it.
Absolutely.
Another, another thing that we can definitely use the money for is for upgrades to, um, like air conditioning and filtration for, um, for public buildings in the town. And I know that there's, I, I heard from the folks here in town hall that there is some air conditioning system that hasn't been hooked up for the second story.
Uh, those are just air con, window air conditioners.
Window air conditioners?
Yeah.
Long thing though.
But they're there. They just need to be installed.
Yeah. The, so something like air filtration or air conditioning is something that it could definitely be used for in town buildings. So there, there's a number of different options for things. So.
Ma, Carried, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I'm sorry. I didn't miss, I just, the last meeting, but I'm not familiar with this, uh, fund that you have coming.
Oh, this.
Just give me a quick sentence.
Certainly. Um, the, these are the state and local, uh, these are the local COVID relief funds that we're getting from the American Rescue Plan Act, which was passed early in this year by Congress. So money is going both to the state of Vermont as a state, which is.
Then I know.
Yeah. It's going to be using it for like broadband and stuff. But yeah, each town within Vermont is getting a certain amount of money based on how many people live there.
Oh, so it's not being put toward our taxes to reduce our taxes?
No, unfortunately, there's a specific thing that says it can't be used to reduce taxes and it can't be used for making, for roads. It can be used for wastewater, water and broadband though, and a number of other things. So there's a number of options, but there's a few specific, no, you may not do this. However, if we use it for other things like upgrading the wastewater plant and we don't use our general fund for that, it could end up reducing some taxes, just kind of sideways.
Okay. So I guess we got a good, oh, Frank?
If I, I think it can be used for, um, developing the technology for a hybrid meeting process.
Yes, it can also be used for that.
So that's not coming out of the taxes. And there would be done in concert with, with TV here and also be potentially portable to, could be taken over to town meeting at the school and have large enough of a screen so that you could put on presentations without having this projector and slideshow thing for presenters and things like this. So that would be something to think about sooner rather than later if you want to move to that hybrid program and, and that's it.
Okay.
Speaking of that, one other older unfinished business item, so the hybrid model evolution. It's ongoing and just like a general PSA is this is all brand new. So the efforts are ongoing. I've been receiving messages from people who are quite disappointed that we're not still on Zoom, but there's only so many hands that I have. So it's a goal. Um, and things do take time. So, but we are working in conjunction with Peg TV. It's wonderful that Peg TV is back tonight. So we're one step in the right direction so that folks can still watch, um, you know, day or so after. So we've been working with Tom at Peg TV. So he's got some great recommendations there. Also working on some things within their organization. So it, it will involve though, some investment from the town's standpoint. So we just have to, like Frank was saying, there's different options. So we'll just have to figure out as a town, what's the most important direction and what sort of technology we might like to have and what we might like that hybrid model to look like. But just a general PSA that that is still a goal and that is still ongoing efforts there. So it'll be helpful when we have those funds too. That'll help to direct that.
We talked about the sewer plant a little bit and the first thing you said when you talked to the guy at Regional was that we should do a brown, brown study or ground study or something you said?
Oh, was this about the?
The old built, the old building. I mean, the store property.
Yeah, yeah. Ed Boeb said that the first step would be to ask the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to do a brownfield study. And they can do that. They have funds for it. They could do it this, um, by fall probably. And then the second step that I would suggest would be that we would apply for a 2022 municipal planning grant, um, regarding that property. The, um, the, uh, directions for the 2022 municipal planning grants have just come out, like in the last couple of weeks. And what we could do would be apply for a grant. The, you're more likely to get it if you have a fairly specific focus. So we could apply for a grant to sort of, to go through the planning process of deciding what to do with that property. Right?
So what was this, this, can you go over that, the study that we need to do, like the first step?
Um, the brownfield study. Rutland Regional Planning Commission would do that. They'd get money from the state to do that. And it would be a study to determine on that property, um, what kind of hazardous materials might be there. If there's any underground tanks, if anything like from the fire has left anything hazardous on the property. And yeah, that would be something that has to be done in order to move ahead in any way with that property. So I'd suggest that we as a select board authorize, um, authorize Rutland Regional to do that. Basically ask them to do that for us. And then they can get going and put us on their list.
And there's no cost to the town?
There shouldn't be any cost to the town. No, because they get money from the state. I mean, I'll double check that with Ed, but that was.
Unless they find something.
Right. And.
Well, if they find something, we later decide what we have to do. But yeah, this is something that they specifically, Ed told me this is something they specifically get state monies for. And when I talked to him, it was about a month ago now, he said that for that month, they had run out of state money, but they're going to get some more really soon. So if we get on their list, then once they get the new state monies, they can do this.
And this is also that we can apply for that grant?
Yeah. Yeah. What, if we get the brownfield study done, basically what Ed Boeb said was if we apply for any grant at all for that property, if we haven't done the brownfield study, we aren't going to get a grant because we need to know what's, might be hazardous in that property before we do any kind of moving ahead with it.
Now, how significant of a grant could we potentially get for that property?
Um, the municipal planning grant that we could get would be, I'm trying to remember the exact amount. I think it's about 23,000. And that would be not necessarily for making something happen on the property yet, but for working with someone to plan, to design something, right? Going through the process of getting public feedback, of having meetings, of hiring someone to draw up plans, that kind of thing. But that wouldn't be enough to actually make something. I mean, I know the things that have been suggested, um, someone's mentioned electrical vehicle charging, someone mentioned community garden, um, someone mentioned a spot. I've, I've heard about the, the farmer's market that used to be in West Pollitt, like if it could be a spot for an outdoor farmer's market. I mean, there's, there's a number of different options that I've heard from people that they might be interested in.
So the grant would just be for the study? It wouldn't be for a building or project or?
No, it would be for the study and for, yeah, for, for the study of determining what to do with it.
And if you didn't use all the money for the study?
Well.
I don't think they get to save, I don't think you get any of it.
Yeah. I mean.
They just pay for what you.
Yeah.
What you do.
Up to.
Up to that amount. Yeah. And then what would happen after that? When I talked to Ed Boeb, he said that these would be the first couple of steps. And then there is, depending on what we want to do with it, there's a lot of money available from different government agencies. Like it, say if we wanted to, if we wanted to turn it into a little park, I mean, I know it's right next to the wastewater, but say we did, we go through one government agency. Or if we wanted to do like electrical vehicle charging, we'd go through a different government agency. So there's different places we could apply for various grants to actually make something. But we kind of have to figure out what we want to make first.
So would we be able to get those other grants without the brown study?
No.
Did Dutch use that for silicon gas there?
I don't believe so.
No.
Probably railroads spent a lot of time around there.
Maguires was the only.
And if it turns out, if it does turn out that it has hazardous stuff there, there's other grants we could apply for to mitigate hazardous areas. So I mean, it really depends on what we find. The, um, the municipal planning grant too, it's, it states here that, um, so the municipal planning grants have helped communities such as Pollitt to implement town plan recommendations, jumpstart initiatives like zoning updates to welcome new homes, plans for a state designated area or economic recovery strategies. So that's sort of the intention behind that grant. And individual towns may apply for up to 22,000 and joint applications from several municipalities may apply for up to 35,000. And for this particular project, I wouldn't think it would be a joint, no, because it's just for a thing in West. And there's a local, small local match of 10%. So.
So.
So Pollitt would have to spend 10% of whatever. And because we are a rural area, um, I forget the exact details on it, but Rutland Regional Planning Commission would be our agent because larger areas have to get their own agent, but we would be served through our regional planning commission in this. And I do think we could tie this into, um, economic development, right? Because that space was once an economic part of West Pollitt and now it's not.
As well as a traffic study.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of different studies that really need to happen already for sure.
Great. Um, yeah, it's in, it's in your emails too. It's online, accd.bermont.gov. And there is a municipal grant planning program description. So it does go thoroughly into detail, just sort of about.
So it does go thoroughly into detail just sort of about really what your requirements are, um, eligible activities. So I mean, it talks all about what funds may and may not be used for through that program. So it does. And just a quick, I mean, underwrite expenses for public meetings and hearings, informational workshops, citizen surveys, outreach and notification costs. You can use it to support research, data collection, capacity studies, inventories and mapping, pay consultants, interns, regional planning commission staff or legal fees associated with any project, purchase development rights, easements and titles of properties for housing and conservation purposes identified in the municipal plan, purchase materials needed to produce a plan, bylaw or implement or administer the project like writing supplies, maps and copies, or conduct other non-prohibited activities. Questionable. Um, it does go all in all about what you may not use them for as well, which is a longer list, so I'll save you from that. But it can't hurt to, I mean, I think that they're eager to help us out.
Pretty much the first stepping point is to do the, the study, the brownfield study.
Yeah. So if, if it was possible for us to have a vote to go ahead with a brownfield study, I can contact Ed Boeb and tell him to put us on the list. And I don't know if we have to have a vote or if we can just kind of.
That would get, that would get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
I mean, I know there's always that question of buried treasure, but if, if there's buried treasure there, you might as well just deal with it and be done with it because it's not going to go away.
No, it's just sitting there.
Right, well.
Yeah.
Put in the arrowheads you have in your pocket.
So yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that we, that we ask Rutland Regional Planning Commission to do a brownfield study on that property by the wastewater plant.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carry.
All right, I'll contact Ed Boeb. Silly question, is brownfield one or two words and is it capitalized?
I think it's capitalized and it's one word. Thank you.
What's that?
Brownfield study right next to sewer plant. All right, what's the next? Anything else on the older unfinished list?
I don't think so. Did, did you have anything else, Jessica?
Um, no, the only thing that I wrote down that you had earlier was that Vermont challenge. I think that's in the new business. Yes.
Yeah, new business Vermont challenge, yeah.
All right. Would you like me to go over that? Or do you guys, do you all have the gist?
They, they have their bike race and they're looking for maybe a secondary place that they could.
Yes, um, here. Okay, so Donna Sohikian had a conversation with someone named Susan, um, who suggested that she contact me. Um, her and her husband have been running the Vermont Challenge, a four-day bicycling event in southern Vermont for 10 years. Our event is now coming up on August 12th through the 15th. And this year we are expecting 100 riders. We would like to have our rides start and end in Paulette on Friday, the 13th of August. We know the area well as we live full-time in Jamaica and often, and, and often enjoy lovely rides up in the Paulette area. We are also aware of the scarcity of restrooms, if not dining at Max or the station, and know that the town hall and library are not open on Friday mornings. Last year we had a much smaller group of riders and parked in the lot next to the church. And in past years, we have set up a rest stop in Paulette and the fire department kindly opened their restroom for our group's use. This year, given our number of riders, we are seeking your assistance with suggestions on where our riders may park and have access to existing bathrooms or where we could have your permission to place porto toilets for usage that day. Please let me know if you have any questions in advance of your meeting. I will look forward to your reply after Tuesday as we finalize our details for the event.
Do you know which roads they're going to be riding?
I would assume the beautiful shoulders of Route 30, um, but I'm not totally sure. That's a good question. I think that it's a long route that goes a large portion of the state.
I'm sure up around the lake and that type of thing too.
I think 30, a lot of 30, I think is part of it. And then I think that maybe.
Not 133 or?
Maybe because they went up past the fire department. I really don't know. I could probably look on their website.
They're looking for a starting and finishing point?
They're looking for a place where they might be able to have people park and have bathrooms.
Or bring portable potties.
If, if we have a recommendation of a place where they maybe could set up portable potties.
I wonder if the fire department might not be a good place for them to be again.
Well, I wonder if um, they have not already contacted the fire department? I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Could be a fundraiser for them, rent out space. I mean, this is a commercial situation.
People park there for the auction.
I mean, I don't know what is the deal with the library, I mean, sorry, the church.
The church?
Well, they could probably park at both the fire department and the church. I mean, depending on if they, if they're going to have 100 people.
Because there's not really, there's not really that much room down here. Not to mention the fact that none of these restrooms would be appropriate because of we have to, we have to pump everything.
And at this stage in the game, I don't think in and out traffic without appointments is encouraged.
I mean, it could be a spot they could, they could probably set some portable restrooms down in this area if they, they chose.
I mean, and they could also easily set some portable restrooms if they use the, if they did go and park by the fire department or the church. I mean, portable restrooms on that pavement lot by the, by the fire department would be a good spot.
I mean, it could be that the board would like to recommend that they can, they pursue conversations with the fire department and the library.
Church.
And sorry, I keep saying library. Thank you.
Probably makes the most sense.
And the fire department.
Fire department and the church would probably.
As the town might not have ample space or location.
Just off from Route 30 maybe, may make a lot of sense.
Yeah. I just know that parking is already a concern and an issue just for people going to Max.
Yeah.
Um, and as it stands now, I mean, I almost got into an accident the other day because everybody was parked where they're not supposed to in front of Max store. And somebody was pulling in and I was trying to pull out and it's pretty dodgy down there as it stands.
It is kind of great though that they want to have Paulette be their starting and ending point.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sure that most of them will end up going and buying something at Max. So that's good.
Yeah.
So I would say probably that they, that the town really doesn't have any viable option for them as far as space or anything like that. So the church parking lot or the fire department are probably the best options that they should contact.
Well, I'll recommend that they contact them.
Representatives from them and.
That we welcome them, but unfortunately there's not really any town-run buildings that. Okay, if anybody has any other thoughts on that, let me know and I would be happy to communicate that with them.
Sign the warrants too. Make a motion to accept them.
All right. Yeah, we, we made a motion for the warrants anyways, right? I'm looking, I forgot that we're supposed to sign them now, right?
Yes, Jessica and Rich. Good. Um, I think that's all that, all that I had on my list for new business. There was something that came in, which I think everybody received letters for from.
Solar Fest?
You received something from Solar Fest. Something came to the select board from M H G Solar.
M H G Solar is different. Solar Fest wants, is looking to wondering if they want to buy a piece of land somewhere.
The M H G Solar one also came to the planning commission. It's that they're requesting a certificate of public good for a 500 kilowatt um, solar project located off Buttons, Button Falls Road.
It's a big project.
Yeah, it's a big project. It's on the land formerly used for quarry operations. It's owned by Nelson G. and Kimberly A. Donster. So that's, that's.
Donsters?
Oh, okay. So that's, that's across the road then.
Yep, they are going to purchase a 22 acre parcel of land.
For new Meads.
Right.
I'm not familiar with that.
Right next to the light, lay bags.
By Churchill's, by Perry's.
Here's the map of what they want to do. Here's Button Falls. They want to put this in. Basically where it's at right now, this is before the um, it's before the Public Utility Commission. And if we want to comment on it as a town or as a planning commission.
So this is the Meadowway River, right? The Button, yeah, Buttons Falls, yeah.
Oh, so it goes out like by, behind Laverne's house.
Okay. The old gravel pit. They're going to knock that whole pile down.
Yeah, they're just going to put it on.
Pile's on the other side. Pile's right there. That's, that's out behind Laverne's house or whatever he's got there now. Who's it learned now?
Yeah. So that's kind of just an FYI for us really, unless we want to comment on it.
This is the deal now that we're not in COVID anymore. You get to sign the warrants.
It was Robert's job, wasn't it?
No, everybody's now.
That's everybody's now.
Um, and then the other thing that came to the board was something from M H G Solar regarding pursuant to 30 VSA subsection 8010 and 2048 and Vermont Public Utility Commission Rule 5.107B, M H G Solar.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the one we've just been looking at.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I got it. I thought that was.
Yep.
Okay, good. So you're on that.
Yep.
Very good.
Yeah, there's.
Okay, I think that's all for Vermont, what they're going to be.
So Solar Fest is looking to acquire a piece of property for 15 to 30 acres for their yearly solar thing. I might be able to proceed. I don't. Does anybody have any Paulette property in Paulette that might be advantageous to Solar Fest?
The alpaca farms for sale.
Is it right back here?
Yep.
Who's that?
The old Callan place, right?
Oh, Barry Minor.
Oh, yeah.
1.7 million.
That's all?
Yeah.
Steel.
Frank?
Uh, agricultural residential zoning wouldn't allow for standalone business such as that potentially. So we'll have to run that past Jonas to see if it's current. This is what some of the things we're addressing. Uh, and uh, industrial zone is open, but agricultural residential zone is questionable.
Marty?
Button Falls proposition, can you post the map on that on what property they're actually interested in and what exactly they're planning to do on it?
There, how many, that's, that's a five, how big of a?
500 kilowatt.
500 kilowatt.
Big, good sized project.
Well, we have two copies of this, right? I got one for the planning commission. This left board got one. Do we normally post these publicly?
I mean, the fact that probably Deb got one as well.
The location of that is if you're going Buttons Falls towards Granville, where you go in between the quarries on the north side of the road, just before the quarry.
And is all of this visible from the road?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it looks like they're going to be putting up fence.
Some of it goes down and then it goes over, it drops down and behind that, that old house place.
Is there an address we could contact?
Where is it, Mike? It's between Main Hill.
It's out behind Meads. It's, it's Dunster. It looks like it goes down all the way over to the river, according to this map.
There's a small rubbish pile there.
So there's a list of both. Done deal that they.
Pretty much when the public service board says okay, we have very little course of action.
Well, because I am in the state legislature right now, but according to Sally H. E., um, there are a lot of people who are, are against paving over these fields, these massive, you know, farm fields that are being paved over like roads. And um, there's a lot of pushback against that. So is the town able to have a say in this?
I have an answer to this. This is really, um, the town doesn't have much of a say. We can.
I have, there's a contact info.
Yeah, we can contact the Public Utilities Commission, but the planning commission is right now working on preparing an enhanced energy plan. Once, once we have made this enhanced energy plan and we have appended it to our town plan, the town of Paulette will have, what, what was it called Frank? Do you remember?
Preferred Enhanced Standing.
Yeah, it basically will have an enhanced ability to talk to the Public Utilities Commission. So once we have this energy plan approved and we list out very clearly where and where we would not want these solar projects to be, the Public Utilities Commission will be required to listen to us. Now, we won't have like a veto, but they will listen to us more than they do right now.
So what is your feeling about this particular Button, Buttons Falls Road?
Um, this is on, it's on an old quarry area. It's not on any kind of agricultural land. And it's in the industrial zone. So this is the area where this sort of project would be more ideal than anywhere else really.
There is, um, I think at this stage it's 847 and if, in an, if you would like to comment, there is an individual from M H G Solar who is listed as the individual to contact with questions about the project. Um, it's, it says at this juncture, if you have any questions or comments concerning the project, please feel free to contact M H G Solar as follows. Um, do you want me to read it or would you like to see it and just take it down?
Looking yours in that mess.
Do you want to?
I may not even really see it. That's where it really.
There you go.
Mm-hmm. That's where the road collapsed.
I think it's going to be really screened from sight.
You'll probably be able to see it from Lumis's, from Lumis trucking.
Definitely, Mike.
That's, that's where you're going to see it mostly, right across from Apalos. If you look south, you'll.
It's right in behind Jack's.
Might be better than seeing the ocean on fire.
You can see that's where Jack. That's the rubbish pile.
Okay, that rubbish pile is, so Lumis's is a little bit farther forward. Okay.
It's over here.
Okay.
Mick Bakers. Right across the river from Warren Mickus.
From, from next, okay, yeah. Cause he's right in there, yeah. Okay, Frank?
I was going to say this is a public comment, but it's really what's going on here now is that the planning commission had a net segment and Jessica's going to put up a video of that. And Annette is like a statewide authority, as John would know. He's called in the Mount Pilgrim all the time. And uh.
To some people, that's debatable.
That's always debatable. But, but she is a wealth of information and she spelled out what we need to do to make it so that our deference, preferred deference is respected. Right now we have none without this energy plan in place. Okay, and so that's why we want this as priority now. For example, we don't have any deference on wind on our ridges, for example. We have to be very specific about it and Annette spelled it out, which was enlightening. And this video of her meeting, which took up the whole meeting, will be posted soon, I would presume sometime. So one of the, so you do that where you want this and, and where you don't. And the community really decides this. And we have projects in the past that support that. But if somebody puts something in, we, we would have to have a change in the unified bylaws, ordinance relative to screening and hiding behind trees and stuff like this. Okay, so there's two phases. One is the town plan amendment that Jessica talked about, which says where we want this, where we don't want it, being specific, so that it's clear to the state and anybody else. And then it's the unified bylaws phase as to how to hide these projects. Like visual impact is a, is a feature that can be treated through this ordinance change uh, with the unified bylaws. So that's, it's, it's a two thing. So that's where we're on next. Come to the meeting and pop in with your public comments and that's where we're headed. That's my public comment as well as, you know, it's, we're trying to get it done so that we're protected to some degree. Say so as fine authority, but we have deference if we get this done.
Okay. What else we got, Kristin?
Public comment.
Okay, so there was no new business then, okay?
Well, we, uh, the Vermont Challenge and the two letters that we just got in the mail.
So it's public comment anyways?
Yes.
Who else has public comment? All right.
Pretty rowdy bunch.
Yeah. Who gets the honors tonight?
I'll make the motion.
I just saw John's hand.
John's hand. John and Bob.
Okay.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Thank you all for coming.